Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, June 8th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, the time is now approximately 10:18 a.m. And we have eight members present too shy of the quorum, but we also have a couple of special presentations scheduled for today. Let me begin by recognizing Councilmember Zine for our first presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning. I have a special presentation to make for a very special person who's celebrating not a retirement, but anniversary of 20 years with the City of Los Angeles. Nick C. Adams. Come on up here, Nick. Nick C. Adams, City of Los Angeles. 20 years of service to the city. And the reason Nick gets special recognition is his wife Sheri Adams works in my office. And she said we have to recognize Nick on his 20th anniversary. With Nick is Sheri Adams, his wife. Sheri, say hello. And Sheri used to be Cheryl on the Mickey Mouse Club. And give us one of those Mickey Mouse Chero's. Yeah, she went from entertainment to politics. Sheri Adams, the original from the Mickey Mouse Club. And along with Nick is Ray Brito, Acting Supervisor. Ray, thank you for being here. And Raul Macia, Superintendent Building Construction Maintenance. Thank you for being here, Raul. Nick is involved in so many projects, too many to mention, but any time we need anything out of the department, General Services, you are there. General Services Division, you are there, whether it be banners, whether it be construction, whatever the issue is, Nick Adams is there. And he's got a passion for cars, a passion for entering them in contests, and a love for his wife that is superior. In his personal life, in his professional life, Nick is always there to help people and to get the job done. So on behalf of the city family, Nick, I want to offer congratulations to you on your 20th anniversary with the City of Los Angeles, Department of General Services. Thank you for making a difference in the lives of the citizens of Los Angeles and all of the council offices and all the city workers that you deal with on a daily basis. Nick, congratulations. 20 happy years. And a few words from you?
I don't know what to say. I started with the city, didn't know what to expect, came on board, and it's been an experience ever since. I've enjoyed it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, for our next presentation. Let me recognize Councilmembers Ludlow and Viragosa.
Good morning, colleagues. It's a real honor to be here. Today, the City of Los Angeles takes time out as the second-largest city in the United States of America to represent, to recognize, and honor a life's journey of a leader who will be recognized for many, many years to come as one of the most significant religious leaders of this generation. We are here today to celebrate Bishop Charles E. Blake Day in Los Angeles. I'm joined today by my colleague and friend, Councilmember and Mayor-elect Antonio Viragosa, to talk just briefly about some of the great accomplishments of this leader. We will then hear very briefly from a gifted soloist and then from Bishop Blake. Earlier this morning, we had a reception where friends and colleagues from around California gathered. And I wanted to actually borrow some of the remarks made at the beginning of the program because I think they are absolutely on message. As a gospel preacher for 47 years, he's been cited by Ebony Magazine as one of the top best preachers in the world. He's been pastor and shepherd of West Angeles Church of God and Christ for 35 years, exploding its membership from just under 50 members to now an unprecedented 24,000-member strong congregation. Having built one of the most beautiful cathedrals anywhere in the country, standing prominently, proudly on the Crenshaw Corridor, which directly impacts citizens of South Los Angeles with far-reaching ministries, including marriage enhancement groups, solo parenting, substance abuse groups, AIDS support groups, the West Angeles Christian Academy for many children, low-income affordable housing, senior citizens housing, radio and television broadcast ministries that spread throughout the United States of America, prison and jail ministries, a Christian bookstore, a Christian fine arts theater, community legal services, political and social concern groups, dispute resolution, Skid Row ministry, and the list goes on and on. For the last 20 years, he has served as the jurisdictional prelate of Southern California Church of God and Christ. And under the direction of Bishop Blake, they have operated a transition home that over the years has accommodated more than 800 men with a success rate of over 70 percent. As you will hear in a moment, what many of us have been so amazed by is not just his ministry here in Los Angeles, in California, or in the United States, but his worldwide ministry, a ministry that is epitomized by compassion and humanitarianism. As he has made it a personal plea and a personal mission to find a way to save millions of starving and dying African orphans who have been left homeless and parentless due to an amazing and traumatic AIDS pandemic. His ministry has taken him to Africa, to the homes and offices of prime ministers, and yes, as you've heard recently, to the Oval Office of the United States of America. I stand here very proud as the council member that houses the West Angeles Church of God and Christ, but I also stand here proudly as his son-in-law. And I say that because he's been a role model to me for more than a decade as to what fatherhood is all about. And the way you see that is exhibited by the presence today and the presence throughout his life of the family that he has raised, who stand here with us today. His loving wife, who has been by his side throughout this great career, the First Lady of West Angeles Church of God and Christ, Mrs. May L. Blake. His two sons, Lawrence and Charles Blake. His soon-to-be daughter-in-law, Deandra Blake. Three of his grandsons, three of his grandchildren, I should say, Joseph, Jared, and Martin II. And the love of my life, his daughter, Kimberly Blake Ludlow. Before we hear from our Mayor-elect and our honoree, we'd like to bring up a soloist to share just a brief musical gift to this occasion. If she could please come forward. I hope she's here. Please welcome Henrietta Davis.
How can I say thanks for the things you have done for me? Things so undeserved. Yet you gave your love to prove to me. The voices of a million angels cannot express my gratitude. All that I have, I never hoped to be.
Sherry Adams, the original from the Mickey Mouse Club. And along with Nick is Ray Brito, Acting Supervisor. Ray, thank you for being here. And Raul Macia, Superintendent Building Construction Maintenance. Thank you for being here, Raul. Nick is involved in so many projects, too many to mention, but anytime we need anything out of the department, General Services, you are there. General Services Division, you are there, whether it be banners, whether it be construction, whatever the issue is, Nick Adams is there. And he's got a passion for cars, a passion for entering them in contests, and a love for his wife that is superior. In his personal life, in his professional life, Nick is always there to help people and to get the job done. So on behalf of the city family, Nick, I want to offer congratulations to you on your 20th anniversary with the City of Los Angeles Department of General Services. Thank you for your, for making a difference in the lives of the citizens of Los Angeles and all of the council offices and all the city workers that you deal with on a daily basis. Nick, congratulations. 20 happy years.
Thank you, sir.
And a few words from you?
I don't know what to say. I started with the city, didn't know what to expect, came on board, and it's, it's been an experience ever since. I've enjoyed it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, for our next presentation. Let me recognize Councilmembers Ludlow and Villarogosa.
It's a real honor to be here. Today, the City of Los Angeles takes time out, as the second-largest city in the United States of America, to represent, to recognize and honor a life's journey of a leader who will be recognized for many, many years to come as one of the most significant religious leaders of this generation. We are here today to celebrate Bishop Charles E. Blake Day in Los Angeles. I'm joined today by my colleague and friend, Councilmember and Mayor-elect Antonio Villarogosa, to talk just briefly about some of the great accomplishments of this leader. We will then hear very briefly from a gifted soloist and then from Bishop Blake. Earlier this morning, we had a reception where friends and colleagues from around California gathered, and I wanted to actually borrow some of the remarks made at the beginning of the program because I think they are absolutely on message. As a gospel preacher for 47 years, he's been cited by Ebony Magazine as one of the top, best preachers in the world. He's been pastor and shepherd of West Angeles Church of God in Christ for 35 years, exploding its membership from just under 50 members to now an unprecedented 24,000-member-strong Having built one of the most beautiful cathedrals anywhere in the country, standing prominently, proudly on the Crenshaw Corridor, which directly impacts citizens of South Los Angeles with far-reaching ministries, including marriage enhancement groups, solo parenting, substance abuse groups, AIDS support groups, the West Angeles Christian Academy for many children, low-income affordable housing, senior citizens housing, radio and television broadcast ministries that spread throughout the United States of America, prison and jail ministries, a Christian bookstore, a Christian fine arts theater, community legal services, political and social concern groups, dispute resolution, Skid Row ministry, and the list goes on and on. For the last 20 years, he has served as the jurisdictional prelate of Southern California Church of God in Christ, and under the direction of Bishop Blake, they have operated a transition home that over the years has accommodated more than 800 men with a success rate of As you will hear in a moment, what many of us have been so amazed by is not just his ministry here in Los Angeles, in California, or in the United States, but his worldwide ministry, a ministry that is epitomized by compassion and humanitarianism, as he has made it a personal plea and a personal mission to find a way to save millions of starving and dying African orphans who have been left homeless and parentless due to an amazing and traumatic AIDS pandemic. His ministry has taken him to Africa, to the homes and offices of prime ministers, and yes, as you've heard recently, to the Oval Office of the United States of America. I stand here very proud as the council member that houses the 10th, that houses the West Angeles Church of God in Christ, but I also stand here proudly as his son-in-law. And I say that because he's been a role model to me for more than a decade as to what fatherhood is all about. And the way you see that is exhibited by the presence today and the presence throughout his life of the family that he has raised, who stand here with us today. His loving wife, who has been by his side throughout this great career, the First Lady of West Angeles Church of God in Christ, Mrs. May L. His two sons, Lawrence and Charles Blake. His soon-to-be daughter-in-law, Deandra Blake. Three of his grandsons, three of his grandchildren, I should say, Joseph, Jared, and Martin II. And the love of my life, his daughter, Kimberly Blake Ludlow. Before we hear from our Mayor-elect and our honoree, we'd like to bring up a soloist to share just a brief musical gift to this occasion. If she could please come forward. I hope she's here.
She is here.
Please welcome Henrietta Davis.
How can I say thanks for the things you have done for me? Things so undeserved, yet you gave your love to prove to me. The voices of a million angels cannot express my gratitude. All that I have, I never hoped to be. I owe it all to thee. To God be the glory. To God be the glory. To God be the glory. For the things he's done. With his blood he has saved me. With his power he has raised me. To God be the glory. For the things he's done. Just let me live my life. Life be pleasing, Lord, to thee. And should I gain any praise, I want it to go to God. With his blood he has saved me. With his power he has raised me. To God be the glory. For the things, for the things, for the things he has done.
Please welcome Councilmember, Mayor-elect Antonio Villarogosa.
I thought we needed a brief interlude. Looking back, I should have spoken before her. How do you top that? Let me take a liberty for a second to acknowledge the wisdom, the leadership, the working families of this city in nominating as their leader, Executive Secretary of the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, Martin Ludlow. As someone who came out of the labor movement and who, for 15 years prior to getting elected to the State Assembly, knows that organization well, the aspirations of the working people of this city intimately, they could not have chosen more accomplished and thoughtful leader than Mr. Ludlow, and my congratulations to you. I am pleased to recognize Bishop Charles E. Blake for his more than 35 years in ministry here in Los Angeles at West Angeles Church of God in Christ. Last year in September, I was honored to present Bishop Blake with a resolution at West Angeles acknowledging all of his many profound efforts on behalf of his congregation, this city, and indeed, our world. Bishop Blake has served for more than 35 years at West Angeles, taking over the helm of Senior Pastor in 1969 upon the death of Pastor C.E. When you think about what it must have been like, a new minister at a church with 50 members at any given time, maybe 10, 12 of them at Sunday service, sometimes feeling like you're talking to yourself, sometimes wondering what you're doing there. Well, this was a man who knew exactly what he was doing there. It was that faith, that sense of the possible, that sense of what was to come, that he helped to increase that membership from 50 members to 24,000. God only knows, and I know that Mrs. Blake knows because she was standing there with him all the way through, wondering, did we do the right thing here? Today, West Angeles not only has 24,000 members, it also has some 175 employees, more than 1,000 volunteers to work in the 80 ministries, programs, and support services. Bishop Blake has recently administered over a $60 million investment in real estate in South Los Angeles with the development of the West Angeles Cathedral, a 5,000-seat venue that hosts its morning services, concerts, speaking engagements of national figures, and has doubled as a Christian movie and music video set. Bishop Blake has certainly honed his skills as an administrator in the creation of the West Angeles Christian Academy in the 1970s. And any of you who've had an opportunity to see the young people who go to that academy, people that live in some of the toughest areas in this city, who if they were going to a local school in that part of their neighborhood where they live, would be going to a school that is among the lowest achieving, not just here in the city, but anywhere in the United States, are happening at that academy. They're not just growing and nurturing the minds of these young people. These are good, upstanding young people that understand their commitment to God, but also to family and to community and to neighborhood, and in many ways is one of the brightest shining stars and accomplishments of Bishop Blake and his vision as well. But you know, we honor him today, Bishop Charles E. Blake Day, not just because of the work that he does with his ministry, the work that he does in South Los Angeles, the work that he does in the city. This is a man that travels the world, speaking out against injustice, speaking out against the poverty, the abject poverty and malnutrition on the African continent. A man who, when he first began this journey, was oftentimes speaking out against a wind, tornado, if you will. Nobody was listening, but his faith in God, his commitment to justice and to speaking out for those who have no voice brought us to where we are today. An unprecedented commitment on the part of this administration to address poverty and malnutrition and the debt in Africa. Make no mistake, it started with the voice of Charles E. And so, on behalf of our colleagues on the City Council, on behalf of current mayor of the City of Los Angeles and all of the city family, we'd like to present you with this small token of our affection.
Bigger than that church was when you first started there.
Small token of our affection and gratitude, our pride, that you are not just a leader, the Church of God in Christ, or your own congregation, but a leader and a voice for justice throughout the world. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You've got to carry that.
Thank you.
They're going to let some of the other classes say a few words to you.
Let me recognize a couple of councilmembers who also wish to add a few words, beginning with Councilmember Grul.
Thank you, Mr. Bedea. Your accomplishments have been outlined, I think, very stuteously by my two colleagues. But I don't know if you remember, Bishop Blake, I, I met you a long time ago when Henry Cisneros came to your church on a Sunday in the 90s. I was staffing him then, and in your church, and had never heard you speak before and, and preach, and to inspire your members of your congregation. And I'll always remember that day because I left that church inspired for the rest of the day and the years and have been an admirer of yours and always thought of you as someone not only who served your congregation, but as outlined today, have served a role across the United States and across the world, setting the example of what it means to be part of the faith-based community and the responsibilities that we hold in doing so. And you've done a lot of great things. One of the best things you've done, though, is have a wonderful family and your, your daughter Kim, who I've gotten to know, and your wonderful grandson, and oh yeah, that son-in-law you happen to have there. We like him, too. But I just wanted to stand and also talk about how, how much your life and what you've done reaches across the entire city of Los Angeles and the impact that you have had, and so proud to congratulate you on Bishop Blake Day in the City of Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bishop, I had the opportunity to meet you at the earlier reception, and your family, and your sons, and the people who are gathered here today in City Council chambers, showing respect, admiration for all you've done. 24,000 members of your church and the outreach that you've done across political lines, a loss, across all the lines to bring people together. It's a tribute to you, it's a tribute to your belief, your belief in God, which you have done to help people, and it inspires everyone. And I represent the southwest San Fernando Valley, where we have a number of churches and temples and synagogues, and when people believe in God and they cross those lines, the political lines, the demographic lines, to help people, that's exactly what you've done. When I read the brochure, that the program where you've met with President Clinton, met with President Bush, and you've broken all those barriers, you have done so much for so many people, and it's an honor to meet you, to meet your family, your beautiful daughter who's married to my good friend Martin Ludlow, who's going to be leaving us soon, but the whole family environment is so positive, and all the people who are gathered here today, coming down to City Hall on this day to show respect, admiration for you. It's a wonderful day, and I know the county honored you in February 2004. Well, it's done in the county, it's done in the city, and we need to continue that legacy, continue what you're doing, the work bringing people together, crossing boundaries, crossing barriers, and helping everyone. And I'm very inspired by what I've read and your glowing smile and that of your family. I mean, you are what we call a legend, a, a rock within the community to foster so much goodwill. I wish you well. God bless you. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank Bishop Blake for all of your many, many years of service and faith to the community of Los Angeles, to this nation, and to the world. I also want to just share with everyone how much we should be grateful to your entire family, because your dedication takes you 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and in mind and heart and in spirit, and it's kind of hard to be a little boy, a little girl, when your mom or your dad is putting that kind of dedication into the community. And, but the reason why I bring that up is because, not that it's any suffrage on anyone, but it's a blessing for them to have seen that and to grow in that environment and for you to give that ultimate example to your family. And also, I'd like to take this opportunity to honor May Blake. I want to thank you for those many times where he came to you and he said, "Baby, I gotta go," and you said, "Baby, you just go ahead and do it," for being there, for supporting, for sacrificing. That's a major sacrifice. You love this man. You adore this man. He's good-looking. We all know that. But I know why you fell in love with him. It's because what's on the inside. It's what's on the inside, and you let him share that with all of us. I remember when I was in the legislature one time, Governor Gray Davis, a good representative of California, just wasn't seeing things straight one time, so all of a sudden, my staff and I got together and we said, "Uh-huh, we're going to get," says Chavez's wife, to talk to Gray Davis's wife Sharon, and guess what? The next day, that several million dollars that he couldn't see straight, he started the meeting by saying, "It's back in the budget." So I know, I know where the true power is. I know where the true power is. I just wanted Los Angeles to know that this has been a partnership of love, this has been a partnership with the community, this has been a giving, a true giving to the community of Los Angeles on, on behalf of the entire Blake family. So today, it is Blake Day. In my mind, it is Blake Day in the City of Los Angeles for all the blessings you've given us. God bless you, and thank you so much, and I know you're going to be busy for a long time to come. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and it's a great honor, and I wanted to thank Martin Ludlow and Antonio Villarogosa for doing this today. Since we always talk about the city family around here, we're, we're all your sons and daughters-in-laws here today, or you're our uncle-in-law, I guess, because of our brother Martin here, for a few more days is still part of this city family, though he's going to do great things, I know, as the head of our County Federation of Labor. First, I want to thank you for your friendship to my family. As a boy, my father took me to your church many times. There are alums from West Angeles who worked with him and for him, or worked in service that you first demonstrated to them, and that was always an inspiration for me, hearing those words that spoke through you in church, and that was something so powerful. You know, the Bible speaks so often of different crossings over, transitions and reaching out that people do, and if you think of the greatest, perhaps, passing over that happened, it's the story, indeed, of Passover, significant to both Jews and Muslims and also to Christians, a very significant day for all sorts of historical reasons. But as Mr. Zine was saying, I think the thing that sets you apart is the way that you have reached out and over to those that we are told we are not supposed to reach out and towards, Christians and non-Christians, Republicans and Democrats, the way you honor law enforcement every single year and bring the community together with law enforcement. You build those bridges that make You build those bridges that make all of our passages and our transitions in this city have real meaning. And you make those reachings out in a very brave way because it would be easy for you to sit and just build your flock and say, "This is who we are and this is our strength." And yet you continually push outward to that which is different, to that which is other, in order to reclaim them as a single community, as a single city, and indeed as a single world. Americans, together with Africans, different parts of this city, together with the area that you have, West Angeles, in, and that beacon of hope, that greatness that you have built there is so much more than a building. The building looks great from the outside, but it's not till you get in there that you understand just indeed how great it is. So to the entire family of Blakes, including Martin, I wanted to congratulate you. Thank you for that service and thank you for inspiring us every single day. May God bless you and your family.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reverend Blake, congratulations to you and your family. This is your day. This is your day. But if you look at all the days, and 35 times 365 is 12,775 days, add that by thousands of people that you've touched and helped, not just in our community, but the work in Africa, the work that's much needed in Africa, it's so important. I feel we all have jobs. My job's a local politician, a local representative for a great city. And I'm focused on my city. But when I hear people from our city reach out to other parts of the world where people really need help and get other people involved, that's the great work. That's the great work. So thank you for what you're doing every day. Congratulations, Martin and Antonio. Thank you for bringing this great family in. And God bless you and your work and inspire more, to help more, to keep doing the job that's so important about people and reaching out. And I also got to say, I got a little confession. I went to the reception this morning. I've never been in a room, but I represent a lot of Hollywood with Mr. Garcetti. I've never seen more beautiful people and beautiful women than I saw in that rotunda this morning. God bless you all. Just one quick thing. One of your great parishioners said, "Councilman Zine, how are you this morning?" And I said, "No, he's the ugly one. I'm Tom Labange. I just had to clarify that."
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bishop, thank you for coming down. Martin, thank you for thinking about this. And Mayor-elect, thank you for being here. Bishop, you've done such a wonderful job. And all you have to do is drive down Crenshaw to get an idea whether you pass by the school, the theater, the prior facility, the religious store, the cathedral. And you even gave a little love to the 8th District by putting a senior facility on the south part of Crenshaw. We appreciate that. But what I think is so important, that you've identified in our community all the needs, whether we're dealing with the moral fabric of the community, whether you're dealing with education, or whether you're dealing with the whole issue of economic development. But I don't know if you will do anything greater than what you've done in the AIDS issue. One of the first voices to talk about the AIDS epidemic, not only locally, but in other continents, a disease that was basically people turned their back on for decades. But as it continually flourishes in black communities, you were the first one that I'm aware of that made it a vital part and a cornerstone of your ministry, and I appreciate that. And I'm also pleased to see that you put the cathedral there. I think it positively impacted your health because you were doing five services a Sunday. Your voice was going out. It's something in which I think is a major plus for our community. And I also want to talk about the classy part of the family, Mrs. Blake. She is a role model. Whenever you see Ms. Blake, it's class, number one in style. And Bobby Parks loves you. She would send her greetings. In fact, to show you the impact that she makes, one day, I was on one of those routine shopping trips with Bobby Parks, and we were walking through a hat store, and we heard these ladies talking about who this hat would really fit one of their outfits, and they were talking about you. And one of your, one of your church members was shopping for you. But I want to say thanks to both of you because without you being a team, we could not be here today. And Bishop, I just want to say finally that although we're calling this Bishop Blake Day or Blake Day, for the people that benefit from your services, the people that get that education and understand where the jobs come from, to get the medical attention because of AIDS, every day is Bishop Blake Day. And we want to say thank you.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bishop Blake, it's a real honor to have you here this morning, and it's really wonderful to hear the tributes that you are so justly receiving from representatives from throughout the whole city because you have, in your work over the years, touched the entire city of Los Angeles, and I want to thank you for that. I want to thank my friend, Councilman Ludlow, in the few days in which I have left to call him Councilman Ludlow, for ensuring that we do this today. And thank you, Mayor-elect Villarogosa, in the few days I have left to call you Mayor-elect Villarogosa, for ensuring that the city is honoring Bishop Blake. It's a wonderful day in Los Angeles, and we are very, very privileged to host you and your family today. I know that the longer I speak, the longer it will be until we get the chance to hear your rebuttal about what you think about what's transpired here this morning, and I very much look forward to that. Thank you very much, sir.
Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you. Let me add my words. It's hard not to reflect, as one is standing here and hearing this, and of the great religious and spiritual leaders of our time and of previous times, and you stand equal with them. And the key that they all had is they had their passion, they knew that you treated the spirit and the soul in each and every individual, but the congregation was the whole wide world. And you have proven that. You've obviously done it at the church, in terms of growing the church immeasurably, but your church is boundless. And I think that you stand equal with the finest and best of religious leaders, spiritual leaders of our time. And I was thinking of Dr. Martin Luther King, where the world was his congregation, the world is who he preached to, the world is who he nourished their soul, their passion, and their times. And you are his equal. I appreciate that very much. And thank you for Blake Day, Councilmember Ludlow and Councilmember Villarogosa. This is truly an important day, and I just wish we could do it more often because when we hear of the fine things that are being done by our religious leaders in this community, it shows us, the politicians, the way things should be done. And I really appreciate that. And again, congratulations.
And it's pretty much all been said at this point. I, too, wanted to congratulate you and thank you for the tremendous leadership. I think the energy that everybody senses in and around the church is a testament to the power of the Spirit that you've been able to channel into the service to the Los Angeles community and clearly around the globe. So thank you, the one specific example I'll give, to just to show just how different you have been, how you distinguish yourself, is this Public Safety Day. I think there's a lot to be said for that. The public safety concerns in our community aren't just statistics, it's people on the victim end, on the perpetrator end, on the law enforcement end, and the annual Public Safety Day, where you bring everybody together. Not just any church does that, not just any church can do that, but it's been part of the vision, part of the leadership, and part of the spirit of your work. So congratulations on this recognition that is very much deserved. And please.
Thank you very much, sir. To Councilman Martin Ludlow, to Mayor-elect Villarogosa, to all the members of the council, I am so very, very honored by all of the kind things that you've said to me and about me on this day. I've stood at this podium many times, usually regarding some problem. Again, when I became a commissioner of the Fire Department several years ago, I stood in this place, but never did I expect to experience a day like this. I'm totally overwhelmed by it, and I humbly accept this honor on behalf of the most wonderful wife on the face of the earth, May L. Blake. To a fantastic family that stands with me on today, all the members and the staff of West Angeles Church, the members of the more than 250 Churches of God in Christ in Southern California, over which I preside, and today I'm celebrating 20 years as the bishop of the first jurisdiction of Southern California. All of the things that have been a part of my life can be largely attributed to the wonderful people who have stood with me and assisted me and helped me in the work that I've been able to do. And I've always felt that West Angeles existed for the benefit of the Los Angeles community. That has been my goal and my objective. And I'm so thankful that we have played some small part over the 36 years of my pastorate here in the City of Los Angeles, in the life of our great city. I love Los Angeles. I believe that it's a wonderful, wonderful city. And I certainly believe that under the leadership of Mayor-elect Villarogosa, we're facing one of the brightest periods of our life as a city. I'm so very proud of him. I'm so very proud of my son-in-law, Councilman Ludlow, especially in the new role that he is about to assume. I thank you for this wonderful honor. Yes, I'm working in the continent of Africa for many, many years. I've traveled back and forth to Africa, and I've said to African-Americans that we must become for Africa what Jewish Americans have become for Israel. And that is the work that I'm trying to foster and establish. The capital income on the continent of Africa is about $200 per year. 750 million people on that continent exist in dire circumstances. By the year 2026, there'll be more than 80 million people dead from the pandemic of HIV/AIDS, and more than 50 million children will live there without mother and without father. Save Africa's Children, the organization that I've established, is meeting the needs of more than 50,000 children in more than 240 orphan care programs in more than 21 nations on the continent of Africa. And in connection with that role, I have gone to the State Department and spoken to Condoleezza Rice two weeks ago, to Washington, and have spoken to the President urging them that our nation should do more for Africa than it is now doing. We spent, of course, we spent hundreds of billions of dollars in Iraq, but one expenditure I remember was $26 billion to Turkey that it would allow our planes to fly over its territory on the way to Iraq. Turkey is a relatively small country compared to the continent of Africa, but if we could do $26 billion there, then we can certainly do more than the 600 million that we will do for Africa in the foreseeable future. And I would certainly plead, I would certainly plead with all of you to do everything you can to turn away the impact of the pandemic of AIDS and the terrible poverty, sickness, and starvation that exists on the continent of Africa. I'm so grateful for this honor. This is the largest citation I've ever received. I'll treasure it for the rest of my life. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much and congratulations, Bishop Blake. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cardenas Garcetti, Gruel, Han Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry Reyes, Smith, Villarogosa, Weiss, Zine, Bedia, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves. Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves. And Mr. Cardenas seconds.
Mr. President, on the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings, items 1 through 3, the recommendation for council action would be to continue the hearings and ordinances to June 29th.
Give us just a second here. As people are leaving chambers, would ask that you keep the volume down just a little bit as the council is trying to get through its agenda. Members of the council, items 1 through 3 are now before us. These are items posted for public hearing. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on items 1 and 2. So without objection, those matters are continued to June 29th. I do have a card on item number 3. We'll call that special to hear from a member of the public. Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item is also a public hearing item, item number 4. It's a vacation in Council District 13, and if there are no protests, the city engineer can be instructed to proceed with the vacation.
Okay. Again, council members, item 4 is now before us. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearing is open and closed. It's an item within Council District 13. If there's no request to call this item special, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next items, 5 and 6, are findings of public convenience or necessity in Council District 14, and the recommendations on both items are to grant the application.
Okay. Members, items 5 and 6 now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. We have the recommendation before us. There's no desire to call these items special. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, for council's information, on item number 7, the incorrect report is on the agenda, and there is a request to continue that matter to Friday, June 10th, so the correct matter can be agendized.
Without objection, item 7 is continued to this Friday, June 10th. Next item, please.
On the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have been held, items 8 through 27.
Members 8 through 27 now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motion, request for specials, beginning with Mr. Parks.
I'd like to have 18 and 26 special, and Mr. Reyes requests 21 for one-week continuance.
Okay. 18 and 26, call special by Mr. Parks. And any objection to continuing item 21? Seeing none, so ordered. That new hearing date is June 15th. Any other specials? Members, items 8 through 27, any other specials? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, on the balance of the items, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those matters are approved. Mr. Labange.
Did I miss that, Mr. President?
Yeah. Let's open the roll on reconsideration of item 25, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. That's reconsidered and called special by Mr. Labange. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 28 through 48, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Members, item 28 through 48 are before us, without objection. I do have speaker cards on items 29 and 45. We'll call those two special to hear from members of the public. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests or speaker cards. Those public hearings are open and closed. Any specials? Items 28 through 48, any specials? Seeing none. Let's open the roll, the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, 49 through 52, are the closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold all closed session matters on the desk.
Then that would take council back to the items called special, and do you wish to take public comment up at this time?
Let's take public comment for item 3, 29, and 45 concurrently, and call forward Ms. Sylvie Lynn Hawkins at this time. This is public comment for items 3, 29, and 45. Go ahead.
Mr. President, can I break in one second? Before we lose a quorum, we have a request to reconsider number 1 from yesterday, which is an ordinance that we need 12 votes on. It approved yesterday, but we could, it's a bond issue. We'd like to move forward if we can get the votes today and then go forthwith.
Well, we're down to 11 members at this point, so if we can invite Mr. Villarogosa back in, just for a minute.
All right.
We'll have 12 members, and we'll do so at that time. Go ahead.
He broke in. Could I have item number 17 go forthwith, please?
Forthwith on 17.
Thank you.
Back to public comment.
Okay. I would like to ask for number 3, 29, and 45, just two minutes, please.
I would like to ask for number three, 29 and 45, just two minutes, please.
Go ahead.
Okay. On number three, we must say no on lighting district until we all get together on destroying all dark-hitting areas. We must first start off by lighting up every business and housing parking number during and after hours of service, leaving on lights with names signed on each building to distract all witches and warlocks, people, for they can't or cannot work in lit-up areas. On number 29, we also would say no until LA Housing Authority rent account program payment plan is right for the public. Section 8 is housing will not continue. We also would like to say no on number 45, showing dishonor to women's or out of order. Men's can't rule in everything. It's women's time to rule in all job position. We must honor all women of all 18 different races. Thank you very much. My name is Sylvie Lynn Hawkins.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for items 3, 29, and 45. Item 3, colleagues, without objection, is continued to June 29th. And items 29 and 45, if there's no request to call these items special, let's open the roll on those two items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Mr. Regosa has rejoined us. We have a motion for reconsideration by Mr. Parks for item number one of yesterday's agenda. Let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. That item is now back before us. Without further discussion, let's reopen the roll on that ordinance, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved on first reading. Forthwith, please, on that item. And we now come back to items on the desk. Actually, let's come back to general public comment for today's meeting, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. Let's hear from Private First Class Ted Newbauer, to be followed by Ernest Hamilton.
Good morning. POC Ted Newbauer, representing the Veterans Center for Law and Justice. I see Mr. Garcetti is with us this morning. That's great. How special is that? Sir, what does it do to take you to answer your phone calls? Two weeks ago, we called your housing deputy, Ms. Xu. We have yet to receive an answer. Okay? Ms. Xu, we've not received an answer for you for the last two weeks. Two weeks ago, you received a memo about prejudice in the housing, affordable housing in Los Angeles. We called the Chief of Staff last week. We still haven't received the courtesy of an answer.
Sir, I think Mr. Garcetti is ready and willing to meet with you right now if you're able to.
Okay. This concerns the Sun Views project. Now, the compliance supervisor at the management company for Sun Views told us in no uncertain terms on the telephone that they are not obligated to prove that the notification process is fair. Our first conversation with Mr. Harris at the Hollywood Housing Corporation, when we asked them, "Do you give any consideration for veterans?", he informed us, "We don't ask. We don't care." Now, on a request from one of our Korean War vets, we did a survey on the Holly Views project. Okay? Now, out of the 100 people in that building, 25% of the names end in IAN. 25%. If the notification process is fair, how do you get such a skewed result?
Let me ask you to conclude, especially since Mr. Garcetti's staff is willing to meet with you at this time.
Mr. Garcetti, please. At one time, sir, at one time, you wanted, you wanted to do a paint job on the Hollywood sign. Okay? We don't need that. What we need is a revolutionary concept to concern, be concerned with affordable housing for living veterans. They're the ones, our contribution has made this meeting possible and all meetings possible.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Commissioner Hamilton.
Good morning, Mr. Park. Good morning, Mr. Park. Oh, it's still not working, huh?
Good morning, Mr. President, honorable city council members. My name is Ernest Hamilton. I'm with the Los Angeles County Commission on Disabilities. I'm here this morning to plant a seed. First of all, I'd like to thank the city council members and Department of Neighborhood Empowerment for the inclusion of disability, the disability community, and the overall focus and mission of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. And I'd like to plant the seed that we're planting a neighborhood jamboree, sort of like a disability expo, and we'd like for the city council members to just support this effort to reach out to the disability community and to the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being here. This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 18 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just ask, on that reconsideration, did we go forthwith on that? Thank you. On number 18, I talked with Mr. Cardenas briefly on this. The concern I had is that, is the issue, not only, I think they caught the proper concerns in the sense of the number of years, but when you look at the report, and it doesn't explain that, I guess it's such a large audit-type function that only certain firms are available. But it just concerned me that in looking at the document, that we had just a handful of people that we went out to, and then only one really applied, which is really not a competitive process. And it is a significant amount of money, particularly when you look at the options that we are going forward on, basically on a negotiated bid as opposed to competitive, although it's labeled as competitive. And so I just wanted to express that concern and ask Bill Fugioke. We've had at least two or three instances recently about RFPs, and it appears as though departments will go out on RFP, and even though they have limited or minimal response, they will continue going forward. And I don't know whether we have a city policy that dictates what a reasonable number of applicants before you go forward. We just sent back a housing RFP because the remaining, the only remaining company was not really competitive, but yet it is also out of the city. We're looking at other RFPs because it appears, we dealt with one yesterday, that all 15 that applied got the contracts. And I'm just wondering whether we have any guidance that reflects for departments that what is a reasonable sampling of organizations or response before we go forward when it appears on the end result is minimal or no real competitive edge?
I understand that. The process is established, well, one, we do not have a minimum number. It's handled on a case-by-case basis. The process is a very open process, which allows anyone who meets the minimum qualifications to bid for one of our contracts. And it's then, it's subject to a decision by the respective companies of whether or not they, in fact, do want to bid for our contracts. But we don't have a minimum number.
See, but I think one of the shortfalls we found in the housing RFP is they advertised it one day in a local newspaper and then said, "A few people were applied." The other issue we find, if you go forward on some of these, we send it out to a selected group of people and no one applied. Well, the real issue is what and where did you get the group of people that you started with? And is it viable? And is it updated? Because you're only going to get out of the back end of the system what's in the front end. And I'm just concerned that we're seeing on RFPs that the departments feel that they've gone through a process, and no matter how many people apply for it or come forward, they move basically almost in road step as opposed to looking and seeing, have we really saturated the community? Have we gone for that extra step to make people aware of it? Understanding that few people have access to computers, yeah, we put it on our website, but does everybody go to the website? And a one-day ad in a local newspaper is not going to attract a large number of people. So it just concerns me when we're spending so much money on RFPs that we're not saturating areas. And if on this one, had they said, there's only, you know, three large companies that could actually do this work, it would be a clearer understanding as to why we got in this picture. But it looked like only one company was competing.
Well, in this instance, we're actually recommending that you disapprove this one request. With respect to the outreach, it's been a practice to encourage as broad an outreach process as possible. That is something that we could, we could, we could codify that requirement if it's the will of this council and make it even a stronger mandate.
I think it would be, maybe it was one of the things we've been dealing with on financial policies, maybe if we gave some guidance, because we're beginning to see several of them coming through with three years and options for three more years, and yet the competitive part of it is very slight. And I understand the department's standpoint, they're trying to get it done, but on the end result, we're trying to get the best company and the best cost for the city.
Should we report back to your committee on some recommendations? Work with the CLA and develop some recs?
I'd make that motion that we ask you and the CLA to get together and come back through Budget and Finance and give us some guidance on some clear direction for departments on what's an acceptable outreach, what's acceptable numbers, not numbers, but just giving some guidance as to what should be done in the front end, so we get the best sense that we are going to get a good result at the back end of the system.
We'll do that.
Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, thank you very much, Budget Chairman Parks, for bringing this issue up. On this particular item, though, basically what it comes down to is this audit, apparently there are only three major firms in the country now who are qualified with this kind of expertise and the mass to handle an audit of a department as large as the Department of Water and Power. One of the other three firms, we already have at the Department of Water and Power doing the current audits. So what happened was, the reason why this was done wasn't because that particular auditing firm was deficient or delinquent or wasn't doing a good job. We wanted to exercise our practice of getting a new firm rather than having this firm who's been doing it how many years?
Approximately 50 years.
Approximately 15 years. So the bottom line is, we want five. Fifty?
Fifty.
Fifty years. Fifty years. So this company's been doing the audits 50 years. We haven't had an issue with them per se, but what we did want to do is give an opportunity for a different auditing firm to handle this practice and into the future, not have auditing firms for 10 or 20 years at a time. What is the ideal amount of years that we may want to engage in one particular firm if they continue to do a good job and they are, in fact, winning the bids?
The basic standards that have been established for the trade at the current time are between five and six years, generally. There are exceptions, of course. The reason for the significant change now is the Department of Water and Power Commissioners adopted a policy recently that provided for a maximum of 12-year duration for these types of contracts, maybe not this specific one, but they wanted to scale it back, recognizing there needed to be a standard established. However, recognize there are always slight variations depending on the work to be performed.
But the bottom line is, the spirit of that is to say, we're not going to have in the future one auditing firm doing this for decades at a time before we look at a change.
That is correct, sir.
Or before we go out to competitive bid to see if someone else can do the work, if not as well, better for our department. So the bottom line is, we were pretty much narrowed down to three firms. One of them, we already had on contract. That firm, we were not looking to rehire, so we're really leaving it up to two other firms. One of those other two big firms actually bid this and actually was an acceptable bid. It didn't seem like the kind of bid that, oh, shucks, it's the only one that bid, it's very expensive, but since they're the only ones that responded, we're going to go ahead and accept this bid. It was actually a bid that was well within the confines of what we expected to see these kinds of bids. So it is a good bid. Unfortunately, it was the only bid. But so, the bottom line is, we are doing the right thing. This is the, this is the contract that we should get into. Would you like to add anything to that?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Mr. Parks?
We'll move the report, but I think we got what we needed from Bill. We'll report back.
We'll consider that an amending motion, friendly amendment to the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 25, called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, members. I don't know if there's any staff here from this, but I see Tom Thomas, that great assistant general manager. Come on up to the table here, Tom, with the Bureau of Street Services. This is a matter that I think is important. If you ever drive down the street and look at a gutter, and if you look at that gutter, sometimes there's concrete just at the mouth of the gutter. And basically, this motion, and if the clerk could give them a copy of the report. Okay. So basically, what I'm asking for is the issue related to, the mouth of a storm drains, the responsibility of sanitation. But yet, often, the street is decayed as it approaches the storm drain because of water and other debris. And this motion called for having sanitation be responsible for 20 feet either side of this. And I just want to know if sanitation talked to Street Services and who's going to in the future? Because we're spending a lot of money on storm drains, but right next to the storm drain, an inch from the storm drain, it has a challenge and it should be corrected. Are you familiar with this, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, Tom Thomas, Bureau of Street Services. Good morning, council members, and Councilmember Labange. Yes, we receive funding under the Stormwater Pollution Abatement to repair the inlet structures, and we also extend that to any drainage effects entering into up to 20 feet each side of the drainage structure.
Is this new?
It's been in effect for at least several years.
Several years? Because I know there's a lot of drains, but I do inspect the drains in my district, and I'm just saying there's a way to try to do it, because I sometimes call sanitation. They go out and fix when the lid, the top of the drain is destroyed, a truck hits it or something of this nature here.
Well, we do the basin and the gutters entering into the basin, and we are funded for that. We have crews, of course, as everything, there's 50,000 structures, and at least 10% of them that were done are damaged at any one time, so.
So from now on, on a storm drain, there'll be 20 feet of concrete, 12-inch concrete gutter on either side of a drain?
If that is damage and impacting the drainage of the water into the inlet structure, we repair that, too.
Okay. Right now, there's a drain that has a problem. You go out and fix it, but just to fix what you used to just, sanitation used to do that. You're doing the work now?
Yes, we are.
You're doing the work now? Good. You can run the clock. The, you know the Billy Wilder movie, Sunset Boulevard?
Yes.
There's a famous line, "Meet me on the northwest corner of Franklin and Vermont." We'll go to the northeast corner, and there's a drain there, and it's got our names on it, Tom Labange and Tom Thomas. And you take the east side, and I'll take the west, and let's put a nice concrete pad in there so it could get the water to the drain as opposed to pool it on the street and cause a decay.
We'll look at that location.
Good. And thank you, Tom Thomas, for your great service to the city of Los Angeles. How many years?
45.
45 years. This is a 45. Give Tom Thomas a great hand, members, 45 years. And you, too, Mr. City Attorney. Come on out, Tom Thomas. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Press.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. For that enlightenment, we now have the matter before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item 26, called special by Councilmember Parks.
Councilmember Parks, item 26.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I would just like to make a verbal amendment. I've talked with the Chair of the Committee, also Mr. Ludlow, who is impacted by this. But on the recommendation of the Committee, we would just like to reverse the council districts and make the appointments for CD 8 and 9, and have CD 10 as the alternate, but also maintain the last sentence of the report that reflects the CLA should communicate with MTA our desire to have a third city position on this body.
All right. We've heard the, is there a second to that clarification amendment? Ms. Grohl, seconds. That matter is now before us as amended. Open the roll. Ms. Skrul seconds. That matter is now before us as amended. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. At this point, let me call on, recognize, Councilmember Padilla.
Chair, colleagues, what a crazy day we live in, huh? Just when we thought things were going to settle down, there's all this upheaval and turnover as we're supposed to be the house within the city governmental structure that's the point of continuity. We have one of our colleagues, it's now going to be the mayor, another one of our colleagues who's resigning his post to take on the position of the Executive Secretary Treasurer of the County Federation of Labor. We have other civic leaders who have been very active for a long time, now retiring or moving on to other leadership challenges. There's a lot to be said for a point of continuity and longevity amongst all this turmoil. And so, in that spirit, colleagues, I'd like to ask Jerry Miller to join me here at the podium. Don't know what the exact date was, but Mr. Miller's now been with the city for 20 years.
Yes. Continuity.
May 21st. And I have the honor of presenting with him his 20-year pin with the city family. Let's take a little picture first, then we'll... Then let me pin you here and ask you to say a few words. Surprise.
Thank you very much. You certainly caught me by surprise. It's been a wonderful 20 years, starting with the Clerk's office, and I see some faces that I worked with these 20 years ago, and then my 10 years with the CAO. And I'm having a thrilling time working for the city council, and thank you all for the challenges and the excitement.
Congratulations, Jerry. Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Madam Clerk, what remains on the desk?
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Yes, let's do that.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted, referred?
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Tuesday, June 14th, to leave at 12:15. A motion is required.
Mr. Veragosa moves. Mr. Parks seconds. Mr. Cardenas is excused.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused July 26th, 27th, and 29th for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Smith is excused on those dates.
Councilmember Labange requests to be excused June 15th to arrive at 11:30. That meets council policy, and that is for city business.
That excuse is also approved.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
All right, members, we have four closed session items. Can I ask those who are not to be present during our executive sessions to please vacate the chambers so we can deal with these four cases? Please prepare. All right, we are back in session. Madam Clerk, what are the items before us?
First item before councils, item number 49, settlement in the case of Jose Gutierrez versus City of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of $200,000.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved.
Next item is item number 50, and that's settlement in the case of Gil Zizer versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $125,000.
Again, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved.
And the next item is item number 52, and that's settlement in the case of Horwitz versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $225,000.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Approved.
And that clears the desk.
All right, the desk is clear. Are there any announcements, members? Any announcements? Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, at the new zoo auditorium, I'll be having a fourth district community congress where we have invited the Director of City Planning, the Director of the MTA, the Director of SCAG, as well as the Director of the CRA, to discuss with my neighborhood councils and others about issues related to land use and transportation, which is, as we know, one of the biggest concerns of our constituencies. The public is invited. Come to the Los Angeles Zoo, and you'll be directed to the auditorium for this important congress on issues related to transportation and planning. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that Plumb Committee will commence at 3:00 PM. It is scheduled for 2:00 PM, but we're going to delay the Plumb Committee for an hour. We will have a minimum quorum, as in Cardenas and Weiss will be there, and Mr. Reyes will be excused. I will try to run the committee meeting as efficiently as possible so we can get through the agenda respectfully and efficiently. Thank you.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. Two announcements for eighth district residents. The historical problem we've had on Crenshaw dealing with the cruisers. Announce again that LAPD, along with Southwest and South Traffic and the California Highway Patrol, will have a weekend task force throughout the summer on Crenshaw Boulevard dealing with the cruising in that area between Adams Boulevard to the city boundary. Also, announce that every Sunday, 10:00 AM to 2:00, in the Vision Theater parking lot, the La Mert Park Farmers Market will be held, and as they say, rain or shine.
Thank you. Any other announcements? See, none. Are there any adjourned tributes? We do have adjourned tributes. Could I ask everyone in the room, please, to rise? Adjourned tributes?
Yes.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. It's with great sadness that we announce the passing of Bill Durth as of May 21st, 2005. Bill Durth was a longtime resident of the San Fernando Valley, and he lived in Van Nuys in the sixth district for the past 15 years. He was born in Ohio on November 16th, 1946. He was an actor and director who did a lot of community theater in the San Fernando Valley. He was most known as a voiceover specialist, speech and dialects coach. He was the dialectician for Nick Nolte in Lorenzo's Oil. His spouse, significant other, he leaves back, he leaves his wife, Yvonne Durth, and also his children. He also leaves behind his two sons, Billy and Christopher. He'll be sorely missed.
Thank you. Others? Mr. Labange.
Members, thank you. I'd like to ask to be adjourned in memory of Anne Bancroft, who was an absolute tremendous actress from The Miracle Worker to The Graduate, to the stage, to television. She truly was an absolutely wonderful person, and to hear her interviews of her passing and her marriage of 41 years to Mel Brooks, their tremendous love, I just think we should stand and adjourn of one of the great actors of this country, Anne Bancroft.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Councilmember Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Clarence William Jackson, retired LAPD officer, born in Los Angeles, November 6th, 1917. He's a member of the Church of Religious Science. He's a graduate of David Starr Jordan High School in 1936, attended UCLA. He joined the Merchant Seaman in 1944, and after four years, returned to LA and entered the Police Academy. He was a, one of his major assignments was running the DAP program in South Los Angeles, in which it was primarily developed to help keep young children off the streets and out of trouble. He dedicated 30 years of his life to law enforcement. He was a, at outside interest as far as being a connoisseur of fine wines. He was always an exquisite dresser and eloquent speaker. He was preceded by, in death, by his parents and his son. He passed away at age 87 on Saturday, June 4th. Funeral service to be held at Forest Lawn Memorial Park, Church of the Hills on Thursday, June 9th at 1:00 PM. He's survived by his wife, Jeannie.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Counsel is adjourned.